Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance, which is the way in the United States of America. And to your republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, roll call. Hi, do you please call the rolls?
All back here, Griffin?
Here.
Hubbard?
Here.
Michelle?
President.
Schlaf?
Here.
Semi Pharaoh?
Here.
And I think Shaya, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right. Shad?
Okay, thank you. Uh, I M C approval of the minutes, there are two meeting minutes on the, in the packet and on the agenda, one for the city council meeting September twenty third and one for the special city council meeting on September twenty seventh.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Alday, second by Schlaaf to approve the minutes from September twenty third and September twenty seventh. Is there any comments?
Yes. On page four, um, under or the first set of minutes, um, page four, under the, unfinished business, um, consideration of sending the letter, uh, for the last motion of it. Sorry, actually, it's on page five. Vote on original motion. Um, Sean Keo, the mayor's vote is, um, not reported as a yes vote.
Any other comments? Mr. Griffin?
Yes, on page six, on under council comment, my council comment in particular, I know the comments I made were somewhat rambling. I think in the interest of clarity and brevity, I would ask that, um, the following be written instead of what is there. I don't know if it's because we had new, um, book. I don't know if you're the one who prepared these minutes. No, I know in the past, I think we've, it's been difficult to balance. How much do you put verbatim and how much do you summarize? So appreciate the effort. Um, so a more abbreviated, I think more direct rephrasing could be what I propose to be commented on her role as resident advocate and explained that her participation in the ballot proposal committee was in response to a residence interest in petitioning the city council. Stated that it's been an honor to advocate on behalf of residents and that she will continue to do so even after her position on council ends. And I'm happy to send that via email.
Yeah, you can send something to me.
Hey, any other comments? Thank you. Um, hide up, please call the vote.
Alder?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Shells?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. For item D, pre-range participation, we have none, non-arranged participation. So anybody in the audience or online wishing to speak before council under non-arranged participation? None. Seeing none, uh, item F, declaration of conflicts of interest. Seeing none, uh, item G, approval of the agenda, is there a motion? I'll make that motion.
No, seven.
Approval of the agenda, motion by Schlaaf, second by Hubbard. So any comments on the agenda? Hide up, please call the vote.
Alday?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, item H, public hearings. On the agenda tonight, under H one is a public hearing for an ordinance to lease a portion of the city hall thirty-five fifteen Broad Street to the Dexter area fire department. Um, we do public hearing first then consideration. So we'll open up the public hearing at seven oh four P M. You wanna just provide a quick summary?
Sure, so, um, uh, this was provided at city councils, uh, last meeting or a version was provided at city council last meeting. Um, after that, uh, received some, some additional feedback, um, from the chief and, um, our city attorney Scott Manziel, uh, took a shot at, um, at making updates, uh, which are provided, uh, pages thirteen to twenty-one. Um, with, uh, red lines. Um, generally, the, the goal is to shorten the document, um, make it a little bit more clear. Um, and, uh, include some of the additional feedback that, that we got and, um, the, should this, um, be approved tonight, uh, be forwarded to Dexter, uh, area fire board, uh, for their next meeting, um, for, for their consideration. Um, then hopefully, hopefully, uh, both courts agree that, you know, this, uh, good, good take on, on a lease.
Have any idea who's gonna sign it from D A F D?
I imagine it would be my, myself, the chief or, um, uh, well, yeah, because Sean is, is, uh, both the, the, uh, um, his mayor and, and chairboard, so probably myself and the chief.
Okay. Um, does anybody from the public wanting to make a comment? There's nobody in the audience here, anyone online? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at seven oh six. Uh, is there a motion?
I move to, um, um, adopt the, um, ordinance to lease a portion of city hall thirty-five fifteen Broad Street to the Dexter area fire department.
Move by Alday, second by Schlaf to, uh, approve the ordinance to lease portion city hall thirty-five fifteen Broad Street to the Dexter area fire department. Um, comments from council? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, council member Griffin.
Yeah, I, um, on the top of page sixteen, under insurance, where it says landlord pays insurance premiums for insurance on city hall, um, but not on the personal property. That's typical in what has been done in the past where we ensure that the physical structure, not the contents they're in and, and nothing about having, uh, temporary fire facility on site affects premiums for any other part of.
Yeah, so, um, so, so, uh, essentially, it is our structure and their personal property.
Mm-hmm.
So they would hold insurance on the contents while we would hold insurance on the, on the, you know, brick and mortar essentially.
Mm-hmm.
Um, um, I, I believe that this, this is a pretty common, um, insurance clause.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, it's, it's either out of a, um, template that Scott has used or, um, from one of the other, um, lease agreements with, with D A F D. I know that, that Scott relied on those very heavily to, to create this.
And then I guess, yeah, so just maybe a more general question in terms of permanently having the sheriff here eventually or temporarily having the fire here. Does anything about like that use of this property impact the premiums?
No.
That you're aware of?
I, um, the, the addition of, um, the temporary structure, um, will impact us for, for a year and, and, or, or until they, they relocate back. Um, but essentially, the, the only thing that would cause a change or insurance premiums is, um, an increase in the value of the structure.
Okay. And then can you just remind me again how the rent and just the, the cost aspect was determined?
Yeah, so, um, we, so, so going to?
Page fourteen of the packet or?
Page two of the packet. Um, so the utilities, um, were, we, we, we discussed with, um, the chief that, um, essentially, we, we know what the utilities were prior to them moving in. Um, they didn't want to do something like fifty fifty or, you know, one-third. Um, es- essentially, what they wanted to do was look at this last year without them, um, set that as the base, and now that they're here, um, the, the incremental increase would be attributable to them.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, four hundred and fifty a month for, um, routine maintenance expenses, um, so they were paying an amount, uh, it was, started off at five thousand dollars and then increased over time based on, um, um, words are escaping me, um, the percent of inflation, thank you. I was, I was looking for the I word, um, you know, since nineteen eighty-five. Um, the idea being that they're here for such a short time, but there, we, we've already had expenses related to, um, their occupancy here.
Mm-hmm.
And I expect that there are likely to be other expenses related to their occupancy. Um, um, for example, you know, we had to do work on, um, the basement, uh, overhead door. Um, we had to do some additional work on, um, the stairs leading out the back. Um, and then there have been some other, other miscellaneous work that the D P W has had to do. Um, there will be additional work like, um, maintaining the HVAC system, um, including on, uh, in, in the portion that, that they are inhabiting. Um, things that are common from a, a tenant lessy, um, relationship. And so it, the, the four hundred and fifty made sense from where they're at now and the space that, that they'll be occupying.
So the five thousand they paid in the past was annually?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember out there.
Thank you, um, is the insurance currently similar structure with them and, um, their current, would be a place that we covered the building?
Correct.
They covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and of course, we are not paying that insurance now that they're not there.
Well, I mean, we, we, we do still have insurance over the building, but, um, not, not for long.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Michelle's?
Yeah, would that even say the date which the rent starts to date, they like start to?
Um, it's, so, uh, uh, under term, uh, page fourteen, two point one, uh, locked by the premises and?
But do they start paying once this is signed or will it be backdated when they occupy? This is my asking.
I, I, I believe it's backdated, but?
Uh, well, so when the F D had, I'll say folks weren't really happy about the four hundred and fifty dollars a month because the argument was there's gonna be costs to heat and cool the building and all along and things, no whether or not to be in F D's here. Um, so folks weren't particularly excited about that. Um, under five dash one, I don't, yeah. I don't know that we need to include that very structure in there, structural repairs. Unless the premises, it seems like it's including portions of section three.
You said five, five dash one?
Yep. Five dash one on the second one there. I could read that as if the temporary structure gets blown down or they back into it because there's not a wall there that we have more responsibility for that. Uh, under utilities, my understanding is the intent is not insulated. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We heard from the fire chief that the building needs to be kept around fifty degrees for the fire truck to be happy.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any idea how much it's gonna cost to keep that structure from paint, the fifty degrees of winter?
I, it, it probably depends on whether it's a warm winter or cold winter. But there, I mean, th- th- there is a propane tank out there right now, um, and that, that, that's, that's been the intent the entire time is to, to use the propane tank to, to heat that structure.
Well, one of the things that was raised at the F D is that that could be an astronomical cost if it's cold winter, significantly higher than the heat of the current building. And, uh, there was concern about the D F D being forced to pay that extra cost that was kind of voiced upon them. The chief also raised the question of, um, the propane heater, where is the, the exhaust going? So I raised it because propane creates a lot of humidity when it's heated. And his concern was that the vehicle would rust over winter if the thing is just in there. Do we know, has that been sorted to satisfaction?
Uh, this is the first time I'm hearing about that.
Okay. Uh, yeah, it's, it's a, it's apparent thing, sort of that did get there. Um, now, this is the end of, of, uh, the article thirteen, upon paying the rent, it can be occupied, so obviously, we're outside the extra area of time because they haven't paid rent, so. Or we just, my right election is this, is that it says we give them the invoice in May for the rent.
Or, or thirty days after they stop occupancy.
Okay, so as I read this, how it's tightly structured, the plan meeting is they can't occupy it until after we've given them the due in May and they pay us.
Where, where do you see that?
Upon paying the rent provided on this lease, tenant may peacefully hold and enjoy the premises. So thirteen says they can't occupy until they pay the rent, which we're not gonna give them the bill for rent until May or after they move out.
I mean, it could be changed to say as long as uh, the lessy is in good standing as far as rent goes.
I could say soon as rent starts to improve. I'm sure Scott will have something. It, it, it's a good point. It's because typically rent's paid in advance, not in arrears.
Um, is there any language in here that gives them clear rights to use the, the gangway to access the building?
Uh, I, I think that was included under premises.
Parking. Use the parking.
I, I think the intent was that the, the gangway was included in, in the concept of, of the parking lot.
Okay, so I, I raise it because the closest handicap accessible parking spot to that door was at that end of the building, so anyone in the wheelchair needs to get in there has to take this long way, and if it's not explicitly spelled out that they're, they have the rights that if someone goes down the stairs or something, uh, anyways.
And, and I, I, I wanted to, to verify, the, the propane venting was the first time that I was, was an issue that, this is the first time I hear about that, the insulation issue that was raised by the chief.
Yeah, well, D F D, we have a lot of contractors out there, so there are a lot of people propane, it's a lot for sure. Uh, and, and not just this type of propane, but even, uh, that's ice arena, for example, I have to, because there's too much moisture in the air.
Do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, anything else?
Just to the question of where does it say when it starts? So on page fourteen of the packet, page two of the lease, two point two, it says, beginning when tenant occupied the premises. Until tenant vacates the premises, so I don't know if that is enough. This is beginning when tenant occupied the premises.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, there's no other comments or questions? Uh, please call the vote.
Alder?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. I'll, I'll make. Yeah, okay, sorry. All right, uh, motion passes five to one for the ordinance to lease portion of city hall. That's for, uh, the, the Dexter area. Uh, communications in the packet from pages thirty-one to thirty-two. Was there anything that you wanted to note on there? That's, I'm sorry, council member Hubbard.
Um, I just wanted to note that the planning commission meeting last week was canceled be, uh, because we did not have a forum. So we, um, I don't know if it's been rescheduled yet. Do you?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we were sent alternate dates. One of them is in two days. I'm guessing it's not that one. Um, or the twenty-second or the twenty-third, so whenever we know that, I guess we just need to make sure it's posted where it needs to be posted, which, you know, obviously will be, but just wanted to let everyone know.
I'm sorry, council member Griffin.
That's fine, yeah, so I guess on that topic, on Monday, the seventh, I got an email to an invite to a special planning commission meeting to be held on Wednesday, October twenty-third at seven P M. Is that something different or is that intended to be?
I don't, I mean, maybe I missed that somehow, but I mean, I know that's a date I said I could do, so.
Yeah, so I've seen, yeah, it looks like you're on that email and I, I understand, I know how easy it is to miss emails. I just want to confirm that. And is Michelle not on?
Nope. She, she'll, she'll, she'll be on a little bit later, uh, but yeah, I, I did get that email as well.
Oh, yeah, I see it now too. I'm sorry, I don't know what the heck happened.
No, that's
maybe it was, you know, like
There wasn't much.
monitor like seven emails.
Um, yeah.
Wait, actually, no, this is
And I'm sorry, did you say it was October twenty-third?
The twenty-third at seven P M.
So that's next Wednesday.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I see it. I'll be there. In case anyone's wondering.
Okay. Any other items on the meeting list? Okay, uh, reports, first report is public services superintendent, Tim Stewart. Tim is?
On vacation this week.
Yep, any, any items that anybody wants to relay to the city manager to take back to Mr. Stewart for comment? Uh, council member Schlaf?
Uh, it's nice, I don't know if all of you've noticed, but with the extra D P W guys, um, I've noticed that we're getting a lot more work done. One of the things that they, um, did last week, um, the only reason I know it for sure is because they did it just down from my house is their replacement sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I remember a little history here back in eighty-four, eighty-five, they hired my father to teach us how to do sidewalks. It's been a long time since we've had enough D P W guys to actually do that, um, and I think it's a huge benefit. So I'm, I guess what I'm saying is with the, the trees that they're doing and the sidewalks, there's definitely, I can see a big difference in what we're getting done around town, and I really appreciate that.
Absolutely, um, the, the, the group is, has been working very well the other, um, they've been getting a lot done. Um, it's, it's amazing how, how quickly, like, just as staff, you know, we submit a work order and, you know, day, couple of days.
Well, they did eight yards of concrete today and Tim isn't here.
Yeah.
So it says a lot. That's a good thing.
Yeah, I, I, I know Ti- Ti- Tim was, was also impressed with, with the, the quantity of sidewalk replacements that, that Rob and the, and the group were, were planning.
Right.
And he was like, eh, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot. Are you sure? Like, yeah, we can do it.
Anyway, good for them.
Yeah. Councilmember Michelle's?
Yeah, uh, I have heard from a couple of folks that the boardwalk can be extremely slippery when there's any sort of moisture on it. There's like a little wee film on it, not new boards, obviously, but the old boards, so probably help with the folks, uh, if we can figure a way to get it less slippery, uh, also.
We, 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 we do sand it in the winter.
Okay. Uh, there is also a widow linker branch hanging from Silver Maple, five, three, three, two, five Dover. Which is a silver maple, so I'll just assume there's a little bit of a branch hanging from it.
Um, I know that, um, the original village is, is coming up for our, our annual, um, tree trimming program. And, um, but part of that includes dead woodding, um, dead or dying limbs, but, um, I, I, I
This, this is the detached one that's
Yeah, okay.
It's only able to come back.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the R F B since we talked about it at the last several meetings. It's, it looks like they have now all been changed to forty-five seconds. But all the one, like, there's two on Dan Hoey, one on Baker, the one on
Yeah, we, 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 we made them all consistent.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Schlaf?
I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Michelle's comment. I've noticed that it's just not our bar, boardwalk, but like going to the first part when it's just wet. And I wonder what other communities are trying to do to, if they're power washing the mildew off or how, what they do to, because that's, it's gotta be a problem everywhere. It's not out here.
That's my problem.
But this is just, I was just from thought of this, that speaking of the boardwalks, you know where the connector is at Grandview Commons that hasn't been finished yet?
Yeah.
Well, I've heard from residents that that is sometimes just taken down by people and is being used and that you guys then have to go, well, Tim or whoever has to go in and put it back up. I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to, you know, and what the liability is for us or for them.
So I mean
What's taking so long?
So, well, so, um, we, we have put, um, you know, two by fours up, uh, uh, across the entire span, you know, screwed in.
Yeah.
People are still repping them off. Um, you know, we've, we've put up orange snow fence, people, people rip it down. Um, it, there isn't a, a whole lot more we can do, um, but, uh, at, at that point, it, it is, you know, pass at your own risk, um, even though I mean, there's nothing structurally wrong with, with, with our segment of the boardwalk. Um, it's just the fact that there's nowhere to go once you get onto Grandview Commons property. Um, and the, the thing that is taking the most time is, um, that the sidewalk piece fro- once you hit Grandview Commons property out to Grand Street is responsibility of the developer. And the developer is not planning to do it until he completes his last, um, building out there.
So is there any liability for the developer if people are going on the property? I mean, I'm not saying it's, you know, a huge hazard. I'm just wondering if there is liability for that, um, company once they step off the boardwalk that we put in and go on to the property where there isn't anything.
I, I mean, I, I, I think if people are using it, they're using it at their own risk and they're, and they're entering on to an active construction site.
I guess I'm just trying to see if there's any, any reason why we could get this accelerated because it just seems like it's taking forever and given this, it, people want to use it.
Yeah, and, and we, we accelerated, we, we, we wanted to get our piece done before the developer got their piece done. Um, so that way, we, we, we didn't have construction equipment entering on to, you know, freshly poured, um, sidewalk and destroying that, that, that would have to be reconstructed. Um, but we, it was our understanding that it was gonna, that the last couple buildings were gonna be done faster than they have been, so.
All right. Well, thanks for continuing to replace things.
I did just share via email, Justin, with you and Josh, AmericanTrails.org has an F A Q about slippery boardwalks and bridges, but they recommend, um, process for cleaning mold and mildew, but then also share the approach of, um, painting where it has, there's already grit inside the paint and I can speak from personal experience. I worked for somebody for several summers and one of the jobs was repainting the pier on the lake and I had to go to the painting store and ask for a certain amount of something to be mixed in the paint and then I got a nice sunburn, um, doing that, so, I, I mean, and then it says here, I mean, so it talks about marine grade anti-slip decking product and also talking with state agencies. I'm sure you guys can figure this out. Um, it does seem like it would be quite an undertaking, given the extent of the boardwalk we have. At the same time, there's this whole website dedicated to trails across America and this is an issue that.
Yeah, and, and then we would also have to look into what, what we are able to apply, given that it is directly over.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, so they say right here, marine grade, I'm assuming that's what that speaks to, but, um, yes. yes.
Any other comments on the Public Services Superintendent Report? Okay, uh, Community Development Manager Report is in the packet. Um, this annual is not online. Um, are there any questions or comments on that portion of the report? Councilmember Michelle's?
Yeah, I, I do have some current concerns with how the noise ordinance has been interpreted. The way I read it is written in there is that section eighteen dash sixty-one C controls over A and B. And it would mean if I have a music studio that's a permitted use, I could make as much noise as I wanted to because it's a reasonable use of the recording studio which is used, or I have permits for doing work on my house. And there's no limit. I could be out there playing things at twelve or two or three in the morning. Um, I do see that the language even now is really difficult and probably if tried in the force would be constitutionally ununfortunately big badness, uh, but I do have concerns that basically any reasonable use can make any sound whatsoever. Um, also, as it's written now, I, I think the concerts down in town would meet it because I can hear the sound in my house, which is more than fifty feet away from where the music is being created.
Regarding to that specific thing, sorry, thank you. Well, you can actually hear it louder across the street from us. I think it's just because, you know, it's elevated, but it's wild. Personally, I kind of like it.
Any other comments on the report from Community Development Manager? Okay. Uh, no word permission, another reports listed. Subcommittee reports, uh, City Manager Report.
Yeah, so, um, I have two, two introductions to make. One is to hide a Meister, our new reporting secretary. Um, hopefully, uh, that finds us, uh, rewarding and we'll stick around, uh, for a while. Um, and then, uh, introduce our new, uh, Finance Director slash Treasurer on Deck, uh, Tim Preby.
Welcome.
We're expecting that the, um, Fall Newsletter will go out tomorrow or will go, go over to the printer tomorrow, um, with mailing towards the end of the week. Um, we've been, uh, pretty steady on absentee ballots, uh, going out and coming in. Um, we're, I know we're in the several hundreds that have, have been returned already. Um, we had a good, uh, Mill Creek Park Cleanup Day on Saturday. Um, we were able to tackle the, uh, amphitheater, um, in Mill Creek Park South. And, um, we, we got, got a lot done. If you get a good chance to go out there, um, that's, that looks really good. We, um, planted a few trees. Um, knocked down some, um, native, um, I forget the name of the tree, but, um, they, they tend to spread very quickly. And so you have to thin them out every couple of years. Um, did some additional plantings and some additional weeding and, um, things are looking good over there. Um, Does anybody have any questions for me? Oh, sure. Tim, if, if you wanna hop, hop on the microphone and introduce yourself? No, that's alright.
My name's Tim Preby. Um, I've been the last ten and a half years working at another municipality as one of their, uh, accounts, doing a lot of stuff related to the accounting, the, uh, and other information systems, as well as a lot of retirement reporting, a lot of special reporting. And I've got both thirty years of accounting and a couple of years of I T experience.
Good. Welcome over to the other municipality, the city of La Vona.
Gotcha, okay.
Anyone, any questions or?
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything else that you wanted to cover? Only if there's questions, questions, uh, Councilmember Michelle's.
Any update on the bicycle lane painting? It's been sitting in, uh, purgatory for eighteen months.
Yep, so, um, I'm, I'm working on the, on the bid, bid doc. Um, I'm planning for that to go out by, I mean, at, at this point, it's not gonna get painted until, until the spring. So, um, my plan is to, um, put it out before the end of the year and, um, have it due back, you know, Jan- January, February, so that we, we can get it uh, painted first thing when, when the weather breaks.
Uh, two other comments, the, the special meeting, I would highly recommend that staff talk with the council, S E L. Our charter says we have to receive notice by email and in person or to our residents. I did not receive any personal notice to my person or delivery to my house. Um, I don't know if anyone else did. Um, it's usually not good to call me outside of the the laws there. Um, I would also highly recommend so there are limits on how public resources can be spent by public officials for making opinions known on, uh, things at the ballot. I don't believe on page forty-five is consistent with what the Michigan Finance Act says. If there's similar language in the newsletter, I would highly recommend that staff also consult with attorneys before that goes out. That's all.
What, what are you referring to on page forty-five?
Uh, so in, in our reports that has letterhead and prepared, uh, computers and resources on my staff, a public official is publicly in his capacity as a legitimate official, expressing an opinion and advocating for a ballot question.
You're referring to the first paragraph of the, of the mayor report?
Yep.
Hey, thank you. Uh, before we get on to the mayor report, was there any other questions in the city manager?
Yep, I have a question about the creation of the parking spaces out front here and that's permitted because that's right of way.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's city right of way.
City right of way.
Yeah.
If a resident lives in a similar area with no noticeable parking spaces, are they allowed to do the same thing or what's the process?
They can, they can submit a, a, a right of way, um, permit request, which will be reviewed by, uh, the superintendent.
And then who puts down gravel in that case if our resident makes that request?
In, in that case, it would probably, it would likely be the resident if, if the resident is making the request.
I'm, I mean, I don't live in an area that has that type of a parking situation, but I'm just, I don't know if all of the streets downtown have obvious parking like that or not.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, there are areas that, um, that we maintain. Um, I, it was, so we, I, I, I believe we maintain all of the gra- gravel parking, um, within the right of way, um, on all of the streets that have it in the original village. Um, the creation of that, I think, would probably fall on the resident making the request, but, um, after that, it would probably fall to us to, to maintain long-term.
Right, thanks.
Okay. Uh, just want to mention at the end of the manager's, city manager report is the meetings with the topics from next um, meeting to come. And, uh, there is mention of a work session before the next regular meeting, just as a heads up. Uh, next item on the agenda is J six, Mayor's Report. The report is in the packet. Can't answer any questions on that, but if you have them, you can always email or contact the mayor. Uh, are there any council member reports?
I'm sorry.
I guess I just wanted to comment on that. So there is guidance, um, from Foster, Swift, Collins and Smith online related to the M C F A. And they explicitly say, first, any elected or appointed public official who has policymaking authority such as a supervisor or trustee may express his or her views on the ballot question at any time and in any context, public or private. However, he or she may not use the public body's stationary, phones, computers or other public materials to disseminate his or her personal opinions or to support a particular ballot question. So I shared that with you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other council member reports or comments? Okay. Uh, item K, consent agenda.
I move we approve the five consideration items on the consent agenda. One, bills and payroll on the amount of one million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-six cents. Two, award of H vac maintenance work to Comfort Mechanical for a three-year contract in an amount not to exceed ten thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Three, award of City Hall ice guard installation to Green Oak Better Inc. in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand dollars. Four, appointment of Terry Sherrick to Parks and Rec Commission and five catch base and repair work by Boswick Company, Inc. For an amount not to exceed five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Hubbard, second by Schloss to approve the consent agenda, the five items. Uh, I'd at least call the roll.
Alda, yes. Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Shells?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi-bearles?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, consent agenda motion passes. There is no unfinished business. Item M one is new business consideration of survey options for housing readiness amendment to the master plan. Um, Miss Annial is online. You make sure she's unmuted, Ryan. Um, you wanna have a motion? Yeah, is there a motion to, for the survey options for the housing? Housing readiness amendment to the master plan.
I move that we, um, approve moving forward with the approved scope of work. That's too many approves, but.
This survey, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who by Alda, second by Schloss, um, Miss Annial, uh, would you like to give us a quick summary? You're unmuted. There you go.
Sorry about that. Hang on one second for me, please. I just gotta get to that part in the so that I scroll too far past it. So there are three different survey options and we've broken them down based on what your goals would be as far as the outcome of, um, uh, for, for doing the survey, basically. Excuse me, um, did anybody have any questions about, about what those goals would be? Or about anything that is in the memorandum that I provided?
So are you, you're looking for feedback on which one of the three options to move forward with or would we be moving forward with all three or what, what's the?
I'm sorry, um, what I need to know is uh, there, there are three options. We go with the, um, online survey and community event. We had, that was in the original scope. Um, excuse me, if your goal is to gather feedback from the public, both residents and non, uh, housing and small character. Um, if you're looking for something that is, um, um, is a more scientific survey, um, that option would require an amendment to the scope of work. It's an additional thirteen thousand dollars. Um, you should consider this, if, uh, gathering information on current and future housing needs is the main goal because of it being a different, um, um, being a scientific survey, it reaches, if I remember right, it goes out to two thousand people anonymously, the residents. And it's, that's a, a, um, a, a solid cross-section, if you will, that type of, uh, instrument. Um, and then the other option is do away with the survey altogether. Um, excuse me, and do more of the type of approach that, that we have set up for the October twenty-fourth meeting. Um, which is listen, um, ask a few questions and get the feedback from, uh, the public. Um, understand there is no right or wrong choice for council in this. It's a matter of what is your goals? Do you want to reach people and, and what is the, um, instrument you want to use for reaching them?
Okay, thank you. So, so.
Um, hi, Michelle, this is Sanam. I, I have a question. Um, so, um, thank you for clarifying. That was one, the, the first thing I had was that, um, the, the current scope of work is the survey that, um, you sent for us to practice with and look at. And then the October twenty-fourth open house or, um, the community event that we have. Um, one, um, question, um, that I can't remember with the survey that, um, you sent out. Um, did, was there a question whether the person filling it out is a resident or not?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so if we do a scientific, um, survey, it will be randomly two thousand people, but residents only.
Yes, and residents per the scope of work as I remember reading it.
Okay, thank you.
And when I say scope of work, I apologize. I'm talking about the one that Ms. Minak was able to obtain from Cobalt, which is the consultant that they use.
And that will, um, sorry, one more, uh, question. That will just go out to, like, will be posted. I'm assuming like goes out in the email and, and posted on the website, the, the one that you had been working on. And then we'll just, people will take it.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, uh, are you advocating for that particular option?
Um, I do. I think there is an interest, um, there is a part that, um, I first, I would say that I like both having the survey and having the community event because some people might not be able to attend community event. Some people have better availability or things work out for them to do and some would prefer to, um, take a survey this way. What is in current scope of work is both are there. Um, some people can come to events, some people can just fill it out. Um, I do, um, like the survey being open to anybody taking it. I, I like the idea of, um, you know, there, there is the part for us that um, what the residents of the city of Dexter ask us, um, and what is they, um, they are our direct constituents, basically, um, constituents. Um, but I know, you know, there are so many people that come from surrounding areas um, that feel very strongly about Dexter. Um, many of them have lived here many years and it while we directly are responsible for the residents of the city of Dexter, I personally would like to hear what others think about our, our city. Um, I do still think, um, that, that, you know, again, our the, direct responsibility is to what our constituents would, would want.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Griffin.
Yep. Michelle, are you able to recall, um, if any part? There's a train here. If any aspect of the Palom project was directly impacted by the public input that we received, do you remember any change they made to their plan that you interpreted?
Went from five stories down to four. They put the parking underground in order Went from five stories down to four. They put the parking underground in order to do it.
Okay, anything else?
The thing that we have to remember with public input, Jamie, when it when it comes from um the constituency. Um, regarding development. Um. Even though you. Even though people have a chance to voice their opinion. When they talk about how they don't want something, um, there has it has to be grounded in the um criteria for considering. A site plan or a P U D. And a lot of times. What you hear from or what we hear from the public is they just don't want more people living here, or they don't want any development. And that's not something that we can take into account. But but to specifically to your point, yes, it came in as a four as a five-story proposal. After we had a pre-con or a pre-AT meeting with them based on the feedback from um. The couple of members of council, planning commission, uh staff and consultants, they came back with five. Public didn't like it. They came back and brought it down to four.
So I think that's my that's my big question here. I appreciate um being reminded of that. I I mean, I still think there were other. Um, accommodations that could have been made, for example, planting more trees or some other buffer. At the perimeter of that property as we had just allowed the Boy Scouts to plant a bunch of trees um further further upstream. Uh. I think the big question is, and I know this because I've spoken to many people who just. They just don't think it matters. And maybe it's for the reasons you've said, Michelle, that what they're commenting on is something that can't be accommodated because of. The current zoning ordinance or other guiding documents. Um. So I. You know, I struggle. You you all know my background is in surveys, is in gathering public input. Um. And I feel passionately that that can be an amazing tool. Um, but when I. When it's not actually used, um. I just think it's a waste of everybody's time and potentially money. So in this case, as much as I would love to, you know, spend two thousand or. Spend money to get a ran a truly random sample of two thousand people and have something that you can statistically generalize to the population. I do think that would be a waste of money in this community. Um. You know. We had the in-person session about thirty forty-five Broad Street at the library some months ago. And I was struck, you know, when it seemed clear that the people who showed up to that meeting, again, this was not meant to be representative. It was people who were able to come that night. They wanted. Parks there. To somehow accommodate that, you know, to your point, they they wanted less development, not more. And sometime after that, the Chair of the Planning Commission said, well, it's clear that that input wasn't representative because everybody wanted parks. Which is just faulty logic on its face to say that. The result. Was in one direction, ergo, the people who attended were not representative. I mean, you just can't make that claim based on the result. Um, or at the conclusion of the meeting to say, oh, well, the only thing that's clear here is that we need to have more of these. Um, I think. You know, council and, you know, many public bodies, they do what they want to do regardless of what. Of what input they get from the public. Um. I think what I would like to see going forward, you know, unlike what happened at that thirty forty-five Broad Street. I mean, the information that was presented to the public was a highly constrained activity. You need to have at least three buildings or, you know, whatever it was, you would remember what it was and it's written down. I just think. We need to be sincere and honest and genuine when we reach out to the public for their input. And we need to be sincere and honest and genuine when we talk about the extent to which we can or cannot incorporate it. And if what we're hearing is people want something that is. Not permitted by our zoning ordinance, then I think we need to find a way to amend our zoning ordinance like we have in so many other situations. I mean, in one situation to act like, well, this is the zoning ordinance, or this is our master plan, we have to accommodate it. And then to know in so many other situations. We. We work and maneuver to get around it and then change it after the fact, like we did with the fence at Champion Gymnastics. Um. We permitted the larger friends than what then was allowed, and then we realized, oh, maybe we shouldn't have done that. And then we amended the zoning ordinance to accommodate that. Um, I mean. It's just. It's difficult to see how this all plays out. I mean, even at the level of the Z B A, for example. And I would have liked to talk to to um everyone about this more at the last meeting. So whoever the resident was, I don't know who this was, who wanted the porch. And it was determined by the Z B A. That that was a self-created problem or whatever that language is. They could have designed a smaller porch. The senior center could have designed a different building. That wouldn't have required the variance that they requested. But because we like the senior center project, we grant that variance. Because we don't know, I don't like, I don't know what the situation is with the resident. But then then we hold to that. That's self-created, but the senior center building isn't self-created. So again, with this public input. My experience has been. We incorporate it and accommodate it when it serves our purpose. And not when it doesn't. So it's a it's a bigger question, much bigger question than how many public input sessions. How many and what kind of surveys we do.
Miss Aniel, the on the Pelham project, didn't it go from three buildings down to two after the public input?
Thank you. I did forget about that. Thank you. Yes, it did.
So.
And there was a a. A. Robust stream bank stabilization um. Banked into it. That's good.
The um.
Sorry, guys.
It's okay. The um.
Make it to go home.
Also, on the uh thirty forty-five. Uh.
My apologies. You all know I'm in New York and the girls needed something. Sorry.
Yep. Um, on the thirty forty-five broad um. To the to the. Responses that were there, I mean. We're talking about surveys and scientifically significant survey, and then we have what was pretty well recognized by the people that were in attendance at thirty forty-five broad. Meeting was a group of people who were coordinated um represented a very small portion of the population and spread out to make sure that that voice was amplified by. Impacting all the different areas. So, I mean, we can't say significantly statistically, we want to get public input. And then say we should have a small group that can manipulate the process. I I don't think. Um, I think. I think honestly, I'd like to do the online survey and do the scientific survey because I'd like to see. A response when we do a survey that goes just out online and people respond. I think we get muddied responses back. We don't know really what the people are telling us. And but I think the two of them combined, one that was in the city only and one of. Population, the area thinks is needed from housing as well as from our constituents, but. Uh. Councilmember Alday.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, uh, yes, I wanted to add that um for Pelham project. Um, they um brought in the the landscape architect. Um, while ahead of the um general process to um. To help with some of that and that that was another thing that out of the public comment uh or public engagement they they brought in. Um. Another thing I wanted to mention is that. There is a difference between asking for what we are trying to engage here. And the Pelham project or the broad project because those are specific. Issues and specific sites versus what we are trying here is. Gauging much broader the topic of housing. When you do. Um, a specific project, a lot of times. Those who have. A level of interest in that are the ones that are more engaged. When we have a conversation about the Sloan Kingsley in the past, the people that are more engaged are different than the ones that were in that were engaged for Pelham project. Because there are two different side of the city. There it impacts different people and there. Is a difference when you do talk about a specific issue and project versus an overall. Um. Interest and conversation about housing in our um. City, so the. To me, those are very different conversations and um. Asking for information. Um. And then a third thing that came um. That was a um. Very interesting point that Councilmember Semin Pharaoh um made about actually having. Both of the surveys, um, because that can also be very impactful. A positive way.
Councilmember Hubbard, Michelle's, Councilmember Michelle's. No, I I was asking for input, so you would raise your hand.
Are there any efforts made to get the survey out either or both to the interest groups that we identified, such as school teachers or? The other folks that we've identified, we want to have here but can't be here now.
I'm sorry, was somebody speaking because I can't hear if they were.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to turn my button on. Uh, are there any efforts to get the survey out to the interest groups that are identified? Such as employees of large companies and public school employees?
For the for the housing survey that we originally were doing?
Yep, or the survey that we're talking about now.
I'm sorry?
For what we're talking about now.
I I'm confused by the question, Zach, and you're.
We've we've heard from the school superintendent that one of their biggest needs is housing for their teachers. They can't afford to live here. They they need to have four teaching jobs to work here. Are we making any efforts with the survey to contact the teachers to say what sort of housing do you want? What would you pay? What sort of amenities are you okay with? A studio apartment, that type of stuff? Or you give them in just our general surveys?
No, we certainly could target. I know that we are that we were initially um. Um, identifying the different targets um to get the word out. Um, and that's certainly one that we um would include. It was more general to uh Dexter schools, but um. They have a certain way in which. Um. They will forward information. Uh, to their to their um families, if you will, as well as their um. Employees, and that would mean a different format from ours. So we would have to work with them on how to how to actually get it there. But we'd be willing to do that.
All right, then then I have a point of order. What's the actual motion that we're voting for? What's the action?
Yeah, after we went through and I was thinking about that, the I think we probably need to decide on what. Options it is that we want, you know, what options that's there or a combination of them. So I I agree with you. So. I guess we need just a. Somebody make a motion on what it is that we would like to have as far as which option that there is. I should have made that I should have said that when we.
First. So so the 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 motion that I have is to move forward with number one.
Okay.
On page uh sixty-nine.
I'm sorry. Was that what your motion was?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank.
I would be willing to. I don't know if what would be correct way of saying it, so somebody help me.
Well, just a second. So Councilmember Michelle, so you had asked what it was. So the answer is number one. Did you have a recommendation or comment?
And why do you then to include the scientific survey? Which would mean one and two, I believe.
Yep.
So. To include option one and option two on. Yeah, Councilmember Alday and Councilmember Schloss, are you okay with that? Okay.
Yes.
Could I interject, please?
Yes.
If you want to do both one and two, then um your cost for adding number two is eighteen thousand. Or. Hang on. Number two takes into account um the amount of the online survey and community event. Um, that was already budgeted. That's why it's only thirteen thousand. It's eighteen thousand total. Um, for the scientific survey, if you're doing it and the original survey.
Okay.
Eighteen. Five was already.
Okay. So right now we're including option one and option two. Is there comment or discussion on those two items?
So so I I I have I have a motion to amend from the shells.
Understand, we just I asked them, they said, yeah, go ahead and change it. So we'll call it from the.
Are you amending the amount not to exceed on number two?
To eighteen thousand.
Yes, I didn't hear that part. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So. We have a motion on the table that we've. Mangled a little bit to get to survey options one and survey option two and an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Is there any other comments, questions? Concerns? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Alday?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semin Pharaohs?
Yes. Motion.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Non-range participation. Is there anyone online wishing to speak or nobody appears to be in the audience unless? Anybody in the audience? No. Uh, it doesn't look like there's anybody online. The three is in their hand. Okay, council comments, uh, Councilmember Michelle's.
Right over the next couple of months, you will be seeing a Canton fire truck driving around town. That's because the DAID historically has done not the best job of capital asset management. There they were down to two fire engines. Which if you do the math, one less fire engine than places we have to park them. So the assistant chief happened to work in Canton previously. Canton has resources, has an extra truck that's sitting around, so they're not lost. They're here on purpose. Um. Because we don't have enough equipment on our uh. Happy Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. A a fun fact is is the Columbus set the voyage after. The Spanish crown kicked all the moors out of of the Gavirian Nitsla. And they wanted to celebrate by going over and doing the fun expedition to find the the other side of the world. It was kind of funny how one. One invasion or re-invasion helps lead off another. And if anyone is looking for really high quality playing cards for Buhler or whatever you use. Make sure you go to Soaring Eagle um gift card. They can only use their cards for a couple of hours and they have to tire them out. And so if you throw them up there, that was fantastic place to get high quality ones. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Griffin.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Alday. Councilmember Schloss. Councilmember Hubbard.
Spooky season, everyone. I'm excited for Halloween.
Okay, um, I will comment the um. We uh I was fortunate to have um. A block party um this weekend with uh. A number of our residents um. On and around Boulder Court. And uh, so the the fire station and the charter amendment was. Uh, hot topic conversation for a little bit. It was amazing. We had people from as far away as Germany who were interested in the topic just because of the discussion. I follow the national politics a lot as well, just sort of as a hobby. Um. And uh, one of the things that I find most disappointing is a lack of diligence by people in. Making an effort to get complete answers and complete investigations. I was. Really surprised at the level of detail that the people um that were uh on my street. Really surprised at the level of detail that the people um that were uh on my street. Um, expressed um the level of detail that they had about the topic and that they were very much engaged. So. Um, I I did have uh one of the residents that said that. Um, they misunderstood the ballot proposal and they were going to contact the city to. Try and have their uh ballot recalled and refill it out. So um, that's the second time I've heard of that happening, but. Again, I I was very impressed by the amount of effort that people have gone to to um learn more about the topic, so. Proposed items for future meetings. Anything that we need to add, delete, change? I guess the password processing is, we talked about it last time.
Yep, and um we're uh gathering answers to the the questions that were asked and.
Great.
Plan plan for to come back.
And then uh. Any other items? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Schlaf, second by Hubbard to adjourn. Uh, this one, I think we can do by both, once, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous consent, we are adjourned.